Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the regular meeting of the Mayopac Board of Education. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
Don't move.
Can I get a second, please? And all in favor?
Aye.
Here with me stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands alone, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is a very busy, very nice agenda today. We have a lot of presentations. And with that, what I'm going to do is turn it over to our esteemed Superintendent Tona.
Thank you, President Zuluwo. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. So we're going to start this evening with our science research program. Several students are here from Mayopac High School. So I would like to invite those students to the podium at this time, and they'll share with us what they do in science research. Very excited.
So, good evening, everyone. Is it on now? There we go. Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Stevens. I'm the teacher of science research at Mayopac High School. And I just wanted to start out by thanking the board for inviting us here to speak tonight, and specifically Superintendent Tona for reaching out to really recognize and honor academic achievement for the students that are here tonight and the other kids in the program. I know they really appreciate it, so thank you very much. So I thought the best way to understand the program is to bring students along to speak about it and give the student perspective. But in a nutshell, the science research program is what I consider to be like the hidden gem of the high school. It's a very small program, and the kids that are in the program are very motivated and passionate about a STEM field. They don't have to be the smartest and brightest kids, just they come to this class, they're passionate about something that they really want to have an experiential learning opportunity with. So they'll spend two to three years in the program where their first really just doing a deep dive into the field that they're interested in and figuring out what their specific research question would be. Along the way, I'm helping guide them, and they're going to be reaching out to people in the field to do an authentic, real-world research project under the guidance of a scientist out in the field. So it's a really wonderful opportunity for high school kids here, and I really encourage all of you to spread the word, to consider it for the high school kids that are here in attendance. If you have younger siblings, spreading the word as well. Something I just wanted to highlight quickly is kids do get college credit for taking this class, up to six credits from Syracuse University. And it's at a very substantial savings to take college courses while still in high school. So just something to kind of think in the back of your head as you're listening to the students present. So with that, just thank you one more time to the board, and I'm going to turn it over to our sophomore, Dan Walsh.
So thank you, everybody. I am a first-year science research student, and what first years do is they spend their time, as Mrs. Stevens said, narrowing down their research question. We take a deep dive into any field that we would be interested in, conduct more research into that field, try and reach a research question which we would like to answer, and design an experiment which we would wish to complete. And during that time, we're also emailing mentors, which are scientists or engineers that would be able to help us and guide us along the way. The year will culminate in us presenting our intended research at the Somers Science Fair. And of course, even as a first year, this course provides us unparalleled opportunities. I have already nearly reached a very good research question. I am trying to find a more efficient aircraft. I have already applied to internships at laboratories, and I have been able to speak to engineers, and I'm getting in contact with college professors, namely at Bayminton. So these opportunities are not only available for me, but all first years and all people in science research, and it truly is a great course.
All right, everyone. My name is Ally Charak. I'm a third-year senior here at Mayopac High School. I'm going to talk to you about our year two and three, the experience here and the research program. So the first part of our second year is developing a research paper from our project that we made a question from and that we've conducted analysis on, and even going to competitions, including JSHS, which is the Junior's Science and, sorry, and Humanities Symposium, and Genius Olympiad, and even WESF, which is a local competition. As well as this, we also prepared for a second research project within our third year that we will continue on to do. You can either have the option to make a new project completely or continue it as from your second-year project. Also, we do serve as peer mentors for the first-year students. These first-year students definitely rely on us for guidance sometimes when they don't want teacher feedback. We always do enjoy giving feedback before we go to Ms. Stevens, and we do enjoy supporting one another. Just to talk a little bit about me, I am doing two research projects in the topic of neuroscience and in EMT longevity work. And now I'm going to pass on the floor to Natalie.
Hi, my name is Natalie Cariello, and I'm also a third-year in the science research program. My first, I began my sophomore year, and my first project was a survey in breast cancer recurrence in axillary lymph node removal. And most recently, this past summer, I did a research program with the Carey Institute and Marist College where I looked at different aquatic species to combat eutrophication. So the science research program has definitely helped me grow, and everyone who's taken the course, they've grown greatly throughout their years. It's definitely helped a lot with everyone's presentation skills, and everyone gets to feel a lot more comfortable getting up in front of people and scientists speaking. And we've also had a lot of recognition, just this recognition from the previous school year. Most recently, Megan Blumer was published in the Journal of Emerging Investigators. And last year, Sidney Maskell was a Genius Olympiad finalist.
Okay, so not Gia, but if you don't know me, I'm Ava Ben Ortwick. I'm a third-year in the science research program. My project has to deal with the topic of computer science, and I'm basically creating code to help classify data. The data I chose was space data, specifically exoplanets. All these projects might sound a little complicated, but under the extremely helpful guidance of our advisor, Ms. Stevens, and our school support, it becomes a lot easier when you continue on with the course. Not to mention that this course helps supplement all the skills we already learned at Mayopac High School, from being a rest taker to being compassionate. We have to do skills that may not seem typical to high schoolers, which is things like networking and problem solving to the point where when other people's plans change, that they impact our project. A good example is that this is my first project I'm completing, and I've been in this program for three years, because unfortunately, my mentors haven't necessarily panned out as I thought they would. But luckily and successfully this year, I'm completing a project and I'm going to compete. And it's super exciting because we basically get so much support and skills that our school already provides and this course supplements. Gia?
Hello, my name is Gia Perillo. I'm a junior and a second year in the program, which means that from the first years and first-years, I'm kind of in a mix where I'm making another project next year, but I've already completed research. So the first-year students are very interested, and we have a variety of fields that we study in science research, and everyone kind of picks what they're interested in. So for first-year students, we have people interested in neuroscience and, as Dan Walsh said, engineering. And then some of our second-year projects and third-year projects include a range from like environmental science to neuroscience to psychology to more engineering and even to exoplanets encoding. My project is on the effects of social isolation due to the COVID-19 pandemic on anxiety levels in adolescents of various socioeconomic classes, and I'm writing a research paper, and I plan to present it this year. Cool, that's it. So we hope you enjoyed this presentation and learned a lot more about science research. It again is a smaller class, as you can see, some of my, this is probably half my class in the school. It's super fun, it's super exciting, but it's also so beneficial as high schoolers to do a class that basically prepares you for college while allowing you to pick an independent research project of your choice. So we want to thank the Board of Education for letting us present today and inform you guys a little bit more about science research, and thank you guys for your support with this program. Also, we're always looking for volunteers and judges at some of our local competitions. So if you were really interested in this program, again, push that interest to other high schoolers, and feel free to reach out to our advisor if you feel like you might want to be a judge for a science competition, judging projects like ours. So again, thank you.
So thank you, students, science research students. Thank you, Ms. Stevens, for doing such a nice job. It's so evident how talented these students are, not just in the area of science research, but in communication. And it's very evident, and you will truly go far and make us proud. So thank you so much for being here this evening. And now we have some other students to recognize. I'm going to go up to the podium. So it's always wonderful when we're able to celebrate our students, and in Mayopac, there truly is so much to celebrate. And each day that I walk through the buildings and visit classrooms and see students in action, I'm more and more impressed. So tonight, we're going to be recognizing two students who took the PSAT as 10th graders and did very, very well. And the college board recognizes students that are in the top 1%, 2% in the country on their PSAT scores. So tonight, I'd like to invite Isabella Valley up to the podium. She's a National Merit Good Start Scholar. And I'd also like to invite Brett Ferguson to the podium. She's a National Merit Commended Scholar. So if any members of the board, the board president, vice president, or the entire board, could stand in front and take a photo with these two young ladies?
I don't know what value that has for you.
Congratulations. Yes, if the board can stay, this is probably new for the board to do a group photo with our students, but I think it's important for all of us to celebrate together. So now, we have quite a few students in the audience who have achieved musical greatness. So as a former musician myself, I know how hard it is to make it to the point where you're an all-state musician. And these are students who have taken an instrument or voice lessons for years and years. They've been practicing solos at different levels where they can finally achieve the top level, a level six, and be one of the top students in the region or in the state. And they'll be able to perform with their peers across the region or across the state. And those concerts are absolutely amazing if you haven't seen them before. So let's invite Cameron Dinsmore to the podium, area all-state and conference all-state musician. He was also accepted in the New York State Band Director Association High School Honor Concert Band. She, Cameron, sorry, Cameron. And now we have Rachel Berger, area all-state and conference all-state. And we have James Biolcini, and James is area all-state. Andrew Clark, area all-state. Lucas Lee, area all-state. Alexandra Litch, area all-state. Ella Atkinson, area all-state and conference all-state. And David Kacuska, area all-state. All right, so we'll get a photo.
Anyone who received an award, if you could come down for a picture with the superintendent? Just one last, one last.
Congratulations to the family. We look forward to seeing our students perform in the next month. There's quite a few concerts coming up, and best of luck to all of you in your performances in the area all-state and the regional all-state performances. And thank you to the music teachers. We saw Mr. McGregor here. Thank you. Any other music teachers here? Oh, Mr. Peasback there. So President Zuluwo, you ready for the next presentation?
Let er rip. Just want to say really quickly, I really enjoyed these parts of the agenda because it showcases and celebrates the students that we are working towards. So I know that Superintendent Tona is planning on doing this every meeting, but it really, really is awesome to see how the bright, the best, and the brightest are here in Mayopac. Thank you, and go ahead.
So Mr. Trombley is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning, and he and I are here this evening to share with the Board of Education our results on the three-eight assessments in ELA and MAF from the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, as well as our Regents' exams.
Thank you, Ms. Tona. Good evening to the members of the Board of Education and to our community members who are joining us. As Ms. Tona said, we are going to present to you on the assessment results from the most recent New York State testing program and the Regents' examinations from last spring. Additionally, we also want to review these results as one of the first metrics we're going to continue to look at to help inform the strategic direction for the district in the next coming years. Our current strategic plan is coming to an end, and Ms. Tona is working with a number of different sets of data, whether that be informal conversations, formal conversations, assessment reviews, programmatic reviews, all different types of data to help inform where we are going to guide the district over the next few years. And the presentation title is Good to Great, and this is not a judgment or value statement. This is more of a mindset towards continuous improvement, meaning that when it comes to educating students, particularly here at Mayopac, we as educators have a duty to always continuously engage in a cycle of improvement, to look for ways we can better serve our students, that we can better design our programs, we can better design our supports for those students. So that is why we're calling this Good to Great, taking a look at a baseline of where we're starting and helping make informed decisions, because that's what data does. Data allows us to make informed decisions to help guide those directions. And we always want to link everything to our strategic plan, and our current strategic plan has this student learning objective, which this presentation aligns to. And I want to talk a minute about using data and using test data to measure success. If you think about a visit to a doctor's office, not one test is going to determine your overall health, which is actually pretty good news. My most recent cholesterol results show that I'm practically a solid, but luckily, my doctor looks at other pieces of data to help make informed decisions about my treatment of care. In a similar manner, we as educators look at all metrics of data to make informed decisions about student progress, student growth, and student achievement, and also program changes and the direction of supports for those students. So this is one piece of data that we use to help make those decisions. It's an important piece of data in that it's standardized. We can compare to others, other districts, other results, and take a look at where we are and where we might need to go. But it is one piece of data, it is one snapshot in time in this particular case, and no one student is encapsulated or is comprised of just the assessment results. But it is a tool that we use to start having some conversations, make some decisions. I'm a recovery history teacher, so I have to go through some chronological information. As you can see here, the history of the New York State assessments started in the late eighteen hundreds, no changes were made at all until about the early two thousands, and then we had a flurry of changes. And I point that out in particular because when we look at data, you tend to look at longitudinal trends, and we'll do that this evening. But when you take a look at a number of changes to the New York State testing program, the three-through-eight assessments in particular, you'll see that a lot of results over the most recent years can't be compared to five, six years ago because there have been so many changes to the assessment programs themselves. Also want to point out that we are in the process of making a transition to mandated computer-based testing for our three-through-eight assessments. To put that in context, we have a current deadline that all three-through-eight assessments will be delivered via the computer by two thousand and twenty-six. However, stay tuned because that may change because the original deadline was two thousand and twelve, so there have been some changes to that. Also want to point out that there are changes to New York State's approach to the use of assessments and to how we measure what a graduation, achieving the standards of graduation are, because New York State has commissioned a blue ribbon commission to study the role of the Regents' exams, pathways to graduations, requirements to graduation. So there is a lot of discussion, conversation, and examination of current practices that New York State may be looking to adjust or modify, so stay tuned for that. And without any other information from me, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tona for a review of the current data.
Thank you, Mr. Trombley. So all of this data, as Mr. Trombley said, it's a snapshot, it's a moment in time, and it's important for us to take a look at where we've been as a district and what the most recent data shows. We have had some gaps in the past few years due to COVID. We've had some years where these assessments were not offered at all, where there's been changes to the assessments and modifications. So we take a look at this data just to help us as a tool, to help us learn where we need to go as a district. So here you see the English Regents' exam passing and mastery rates for the last three most recent years, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand and twenty-two, as well as the New York State passing rate and the mastery rate. So you can see we exceeded in two thousand and twenty-two the passing rate with a ninety-three percent passing as compared to the rest of New York State on average at eighty-one percent, and our mastery rate was just shy of the average mastery rate in the state. Here you see our social studies Regents' exams, the global history exam, which is offered in 10th grade, and the U.S. history exam, which is offered in 11th grade. You can see that U.S. history was not offered in two thousand and twenty-two. There was a glitch in the state's test, so they pulled the test from use for last spring. And you can see our passing and mastery rates. Here are our science Regents' exams at the high school, so living environment, earth science, chemistry, and physics. Where there's no data for chemistry and physics, there wasn't a large enough sample of students who took the test, or it wasn't offered in two thousand and twenty-two, so that we don't have that information there. But you can see passing is at a sixty-five, and mastery is at eighty-five. So we do have the opportunity to take a look at our mastery rates in our Regents' exams so that we can challenge our students to achieve a score higher than an eighty-five. In the middle school, we offer living environment to some students in eighth grade. It's considered an accelerated program, so you can see that each year, all of the eighth grade students who take living environment have passed that exam, and you can see the percentages there of the students who have achieved mastery at eighty-five percent. Here's the high school math Regents' exams, so algebra, geometry, and algebra two. Keep in mind that at the algebra in the high school, there is a large portion of students who go into the high school and go right to geometry. And at the middle school, these are the students that took algebra in eighth grade, one hundred percent of them passed the Regents' exam, where in two thousand and twenty-two, forty-five percent of them achieved mastery. Now we're taking a look at our high school, or actually, it's our district graduation rate. Very happy with the graduation rate here. We anticipate approximately ninety-six percent for our graduation rate from the two thousand and twenty-two students that graduated. This is a four-year graduation rate, and some students need additional time to reach graduation, and so the state does offer a five-year and a six-year graduation rate. So now we'll take a look at the grades three through eight ELA and MAF assessments. So this is the participation rate. So this is the participation rate in the most recent year, last spring, compared to New York State. So you could see our, the participation rate in Mayopac is quite less than the rest of the state, the average of the state. So the ELA and the math exams in grades three through eight are scored on four levels of performance. Students who achieve a level four are excelling in their standards, a level three, they are proficient, level two, they are partially proficient, but they're still on track to meet New York State High School graduation requirements, and eleven, a level one student is below proficiency. So this is a snapshot of all of the three eight assessments together. You could see where Mayopac is at, we're, on ELA, we're just slightly above the New York State average, and in math, we're also slightly above the New York State average. So these are the last four years when the ELA was offered in grades three through five. Keep in mind that it's hard to compare one year to the next because in those four years, there were three different test formats. So the state does change the formatting of the tests on a regular basis. In some cases, it was in response to COVID. And here's grades six through eight in ELA. And here's grades three through five for math. And grades six through eight for math. So next steps, there's always room for growth, and we will continue to take a look at data, this type of data, formative assessment data at the classroom level and the building level, to, to help us understand what our students need so that we can provide them with the best education, the most rigorous education, so that they can leave our school district as successful as possible. We'll continue to provide professional development for our staff, for our teachers, especially in the new next generation standards, so that they are most prepared to meet the needs of our students and develop rigorous content. We will look at our Regents' Exams, especially the mastery levels, and take a deep dive to understand what else can we do to bring our students to that mastery level. We've already started to have conversations. Just today, we met with our entire administrative team, and we reviewed this data. And now the next steps are for them to bring the, the data back to their buildings and have these conversations. These conversations are not easy. We're not at 100% across the board. No one is. So it's very easy to say we have room to grow. And with the sunset of the last strategic plan, I've been charged, I knew that as I came into the district, it's time to look at a new strategic plan. So this is just one piece of the data that we'll look at, input from our staff, our administrators, our Board of Education, parents, students, the entire community. What do we need in our district so that we can bring our students to continued greatness? So that in the next five years, we can look back and say, wow, we're doing even better than we were before. So all of these things are, this is just a piece of the puzzle. So the, the test data is informative, and it will help us understand what we need to do to do the best that we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the focus on the academics that is important in terms of driving success for students in the entire district. And if you don't measure something, you don't know if you're getting to where you want to be. So these are some of the measurements, some of the tools that I be, and so I commend Ms. Tona and Mr. Trombley on the presentation, and I look forward to the inclusion of how we're going to get better in the strategic plan. So thank you again. Okay, so we're going to get into some of the more routine parts of the, of the, of the agenda. There is a communication section, and this is a section that typically is not used, so tonight we actually have somebody here. So this is the comments on agenda items, and with that, I believe we have Kate Bellantoni. There she is. Okay, thanks, Kate.
I'm here to talk about the books and the vote that's going to happen. Although not my current career, I come from a background in crisis management planning. I look at every angle of a potential situation and work to remove the chances of an incident occurring through proper policy. I like the middle school's current procedure with sixth and seventh graders needing permission to check out books currently in the eighth grade read section. However, with no fault to the librarian, there are loopholes in this procedure that cannot be controlled unless a set policy is implemented. For example, as we learned on Tuesday, 10 to 13-year-olds can still look at books published for 14 and above inside the library without any kind of permission. Further, we still don't know if the online system can set digital access to be only eighth grade and up. To allow these middle school children, 10, 11, 12, and 13-year-olds to have access to a book with 300 uses of F-U-C-K-S-H-I-T, chance of F the police, and the confusion of good cops versus bad cops because they're just too young to understand this book, is not acceptable for our school. Lakeland, Pleasantville, White Plains, a bunch of other surrounding districts agree too because it's not in their middle school either. I personally do not believe this book should be in any school setting because of how much vulgarity is in it. But to find a middle ground, it should at very least be moved to the high school only. Here, all kids, all kids, will be a publisher's recommended age, taking away that loophole, and they'll have the appropriate maturity level to process this type of book correctly, the way the publisher wants it to be. If you do choose tonight to vote to keep it in the middle school, I just, I don't think you can accurately vote on it until a set policy is implemented to combat these loopholes and take care of them successfully. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the finance section. This is sort of routine business to appoint, to go through each one for procedural purposes. Please wait till I finish the request for the motion. All right, so for the first one, a warrants, this is a motion to accept the warrants for August of 2022. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, and I have a motion to accept the appropriation status July 22 to through the August 2022, excuse me, motion to accept.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So C, revenue, a motion to accept revenue July 2022 through August of 2022. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Letter D, can I get a motion to accept the budget transfer of August 2022?
So moved.
Second, please.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is that, all right, now we're going to move on to the acceptance of the minutes, same, same thing. Can I get a motion to accept the work session minutes of September 20th, 2022?
So moved.
Second, please.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
The letter B in that section of the minutes, regular, a motion to regular, to accept the regular meeting minutes, September 22, 2022, the year 2022.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Letter C, can I get a motion to accept the work session minutes of October 18th, 2022?
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get, the letter D, can I get the motion to accept the regular board minutes, board meeting minutes of October 20th, 2022?
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, with that, we are going to move to the superintendent's report, and I turn it over to Superintendent Tona.
Thank you, President Dululo. So tonight was truly a celebration of several of our students and their amazing accomplishments. I would also like to congratulate the new inductees of Mu Alpha Theta, our high school math honor society, as they were inducted last night. As our fall sports have recently completed, I look forward to celebrating those student athletes who were recognized for being top in their sport at our December board meeting. Our winter sports are now underway at the high school and modified for beginning after Thanksgiving. We look forward to an exciting season. Go Pack! So with the holiday season upon us, we do have some concerts coming up that will be enjoyable, such as our middle school chorus concert on December 6th, high school illusions, they were practicing while you were coming in, they sound amazing. They'll be performing on December 8th, 9th, and 10th. Austin Road and Lakeview have concerts on the 12th, the middle school orchestra on the 13th, Fulmer Road on the 14th, middle school band on the 15th, and the high school winter recital will be here on December 19th. And a reminder that our annual Toys for Tots drive is underway. New unwrapped toys are being collected at each of our schools. As Thanksgiving is a week away, we have so much for which to be thankful. As demonstrated this evening, we have wonderful and talented Mayopac students. They excel in so many areas and exhibit kindness and respect. The Mayopac community is made up of individuals, families, and businesses who strive to support our students and each other. The faculty and staff of the Mayopac Central School District continues to impress me every day with their dedication and attention to the success and well-being of our students. And the Board of Education truly has the best interest of our students in the forefront with each and every decision that they make. I am grateful for the support that they provide to all of us. Happy Thanksgiving to all, enjoy the time with your family and friends.
Thank you, Superintendent Tona. Okay, so next is our committee reports. So, I mean, to talk out to people, but just to let people know who weren't paying attention to my name show what we do here, there is a, a meeting on Tuesday, which is the work session, and then there's a meeting tonight. We also have committee meetings. So what we do tonight is do a recap, sort of a top-line recap. The minutes of those meetings are posted in the website, on the, on the district website. So if you want to listen to the, some of the material here, you can say, well, I didn't catch this, or I didn't catch that, you can go on. If the topic is executive, top, executive material, meaning it's related to jobs and salaries and personnel, it will not show up in those minutes. But I, I encourage folks to look in those, and if they have questions going forward. And you can see that. So with that, I know we had a couple of meetings earlier in the month. I think the first one we're going to pick on is finance, not pick on, we're going to go through is finance. With that, I'd like to turn it over to trustee Jonathan Schneider. Jonathan, can you take us through the, the meeting, please?
Yeah, absolutely. It's my pleasure, too. I, we apologize that our originally scheduled meeting had to get rescheduled to this Monday night, so we did hold our meeting this Monday night, November 14th, at 7:00 PM. The location was at the district office. Members that were present, the committee with myself as the chair, trustee Massofra, and trustee Dulula as well. We also had Superintendent Tona and interim Assistant Superintendent of Business Howe who were present. There were no others that were present at the time. The item agendas that we had discussed were, first, the draft budget calendar. The committee had reviewed the superintendent's updated draft timeline for the budget meetings. We had discussed the cabinet's process of budgeting through the departmental budget requests and views. The finance committee will be receiving first draft of budget presentations when it is practical, and we will continue to update if there are any changes that go forward. Second, we reviewed the tax levy limit formula. We reviewed how the formula incorporates different aspects of statistics in order to come together with what our formula is, and our interim Superintendent of Business will be reviewing that levy formula at each of our budget presentations as well. Thank you. We then moved on to our final audit reports that we received. These were the independent audit reports from an outside audit agency. This was our first year that we had worked with this auditing firm. We had discussed three items in particular. The first was funding deficits that had totaled approximately $30,000. That was for the Lakeview water project. We also had discussed unspecified projects that totaled approximately $190,000, and these were from, again, unspecified projects that were in the audit report, but there was no timeline for them. The board will be taking corrective action in accordance with the recommended action plan, which should include budget transfers and modifications, and this will also correct this deficiency as well to address this matter going forward. The second item that we had discussed was the district has an additional $870,000 in the food services fund. This is approximately $522,000 over the recommended level, so we are going to be following the recommendations of spending down that excess, and that is already underway with the increased quality of food selection that has been implemented this school year under the direction of both the superintendent as well as interim Assistant Superintendent, so thank you for those, and I look forward to my cafeteria tour. And finally, we had discussed unnecessary special purpose funds that we had continued to maintain on our books. There were 27 inactive accounts that had totaled approximately $29,000 in funds. Recommendation is that we'll be closing these funds, and we'll be following that recommendation as well. Finally, we reviewed all these financial reports. We had reviewed financial reports for the month, and the board forwarded them, oh, I'm sorry, the board is now reviewed and has approved them today. At our next meeting, we plan on having a presentation from both the superintendent as well as the interim Superintendent of Business that will review and present the use of the grant expenditures that our committee will be able to review, and then the board presentation will be presented in its entirety in December. So again, that'll be a review of the grants and expenditures that we have had over recent years, especially in regards to federally. And then we may have an update on district own real estate if available at that time. We closed the meeting at 8:51 PM. Our next committee meeting is scheduled for December 15th at 6:00 PM at the district office, and that is the final part of the minutes for the finance committee for the November meeting of 2022.
Thank you, Jonathan, for that extremely thorough report. I really appreciate it, and I think the public should realize how much detail is in there. And again, I welcome and I encourage folks to, to take a look at that. Next are the HR committee, the Human Resource Committee, and Facilities, and I'm saying them in tandem because Vice President Adam Simeon is going to cover both.
Good evening, everyone. The HR committee met on Wednesday, November 9th, at 6:15 PM at the district office. Present were Superintendent Tona, myself, trustees Martinez and Massofra. We discussed what is listed on tonight's consent agenda under HR. Again, this is one of the topics that President Dulu spoke about, is confidential, but the majority of it is on the tonight's HR agenda. We adjourned at 7:30. Previous to that meeting on November 9th, the facilities committee met at 4:15. We started, met at Lakeview Elementary School, myself along with Superintendent Tona, interim Assistant Superintendent Howe, trustee Martinez, interim Director of Facilities John Russell, project manager Joe Pfeifer, and our soon-to-be facilities director Tim Walsh. The pro, as we discussed was last month, we started our tours of all the buildings. We've, we've been to the high school, the middle school, and the fall school. This past month, we were at, this, this month, we were at Lakeview, Austin, and Fulmer discussing the current This past month, we were at, this month, we were at Lakeview, Austin, and Fulmer, discussing the current work that's going on, as well as the work that's gonna be coming up over the summer, and possibly the future projects down the road. We began at four fifteen, and we concluded our meeting at Austin Road at five forty-five.
Okay, thank you. We did not have a policy meeting. We have those every other month. And we did not have an ad hoc committee meeting, but I'm gonna give trustee McCracken the floor for a brief sort of pitch and a commercial for that committee, which I was lucky enough to chair last year. So Tanner, go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. President. So the ad hoc advocacy committee is ad hoc in nature because it's actually a board committee that includes board members and members of the community. It's whatever the board describes it to be. So we actually reached a year since it was created, and we actually accomplished a lot during the legislative session up in Albany, the state senate and state assembly legislative session. So what we do is we discuss issues that impact our school district and education on a whole at the local, state, and federal level. So this could be legislation or policy impacting education in the district. This could be federal funding, state funding, all sorts of stuff. So we discuss those issues as a committee, and we recommend to the full board stances to take on those certain issues. So we did two plans last year. One was calling for local control after over two years of mandates and regulations related to the pandemic from the state level. And then during the budget session at the state level, we actually outlined budget priorities that we advocated for on behalf of the Mayo Pack Central School District. So it's just giving Mayo Pack a voice in what is very much a controlling political environment currently in our state and country related to education. So the pitch is, you can join if you want on our district website, under the district clerk, or excuse me, under the Board of Education tab, under the committee tab, you'll find our committee page, and there's a link to click to submit a form if you want to join the committee or show your interest. So, and if you get confused, you can always email me or someone who's always great to email, sorry to throw you on the spot here, but Melanie Maraca, our district clerk. If you're ever confused in anything Board of Education-related, she is a fantastic resource. So sure, she'll point everyone in the right direction. So yeah, so if you're interested, we'd love to see your interest via the form, and what we'll do is in December, we'll have an initial meeting, and then we'll, I'm sure, December board meeting, we will establish our set committee. And then going forward, we're gonna talk about what to do in January, because the state legislature will be convening in January, and we're gonna have a new Congress as well. So a lot to discuss and a lot to advocate for our kids, our students, and our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Tanner. Appreciate it. And I encourage folks who are interested in this, I think, if Tanner didn't mention, I'll just amplify it. The financial implication of what is decided in Albany is tremendous. And any way we can influence the folks that we have put into office is valuable. And I think that's really important. The budget is in the hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-three million dollar range this year, and it will go up next year. It's just, just the way, it's not gonna, it will likely go up. However, the way to impact the aid that we get from Albany is through these advocacy's. Other districts have it, and they're only focused on finances, and I think it's incredibly competitive. I can tell you, I had a conversation, I was able to have a conversation with the two senators and the Assemblyman in our district, and they listened to you because it's an election year, and Kevin Burns' office listened, and...
Senator Pete Hark...
Thank you. Pete Harkum was actually on the line, and he was sitting there taking notes and paying attention because he knew that it's important. So it's not, it's not just throwing dust in the wind. It's important. And the way Tanner and I have worked last year was great, and we were able to, I think we made a difference. So any interest in that, please let us know. Okay, with that, so Jonathan just mentioned, this is new business, okay? We have a couple of items here. He just mentioned the corrective action plan on the, from the audit. So what I'm gonna do is read the resolution, and then just ask for a motion to accept the resolution. Here we go. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools of Board of Education hereby approves the corrective action plan for the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two annual audit and authorizes that it be submitted to the New York State Education Department. Can I get a motion to accept that resolution? Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, terrific. So now we move on to letter B. Letter B and letter C are the library books, which has gotten quite a bit of attention over the last few weeks and over a few months. New business, B. Did it change? Okay. So Library Books is looking for Alaska and The Hate You Give. All right, we have some additional information that has come. Folks on the board want to have additional discussions. So some of you may have come for this issue, and I appreciate that, and if, you know, you want to talk to us, all fine, that's fine. We're going to table this discussion until the next working session in December. I don't have the date in front of me, but it's the first, it's the...
December twentieth.
It's December twentieth, and you can come to this session and you can listen. I know this is a very hot-button issue, and we're taking this extremely seriously. We have a policy in place. We have a committee that has done its work and has sent us a recommendation. So I'm not gonna go over through everything that Superintendent Tona talked about on Tuesday, but I will tell you, we have a very detailed policy on how contested books are supposed to be handling, and we're following the letter of that policy. And as a board, that's what we do. We develop policy, and we follow the rules. We have rules like any other organization. So we take this very seriously. It's not being dismissive. If anybody's thinking, well, you're, we're doing something that's not in public, that's not true. Everything is about, is, has been open. And quite honestly, if you paid attention to Tuesday's meeting, you can see we had a very, very robust discussion, and we covered both sides. So we are going to table. So what that means is we're gonna move, we're not gonna talk about it now. We're not gonna vote on it. I don't know what K. is. We're not gonna vote on it tonight. So likely, there's gonna be a discussion on the twentieth of December. Okay, does anybody have any comments on the board? It's okay if you want.
I would just...
Go ahead.
I want to get the mic on. No, so, thank you, Mr. President. I definitely appreciate it. I think that the discussion is there, and I think, as it was stated tonight, we're working very diligently to ensure that we're not restricting anything, and we are trying to ensure that we are still allowing as much thought into the procedure of the books to be obtained. So the comments, greatly appreciated. They're definitely being listened to, and this board, I commend for having this open discussion, continuing to talk about it next month, so.
All right, thanks, Jonathan.
And I may?
Yes, sir.
Add my comments. Thank you. Yeah, so I think the balance that we have to strike is how do we keep libraries a public learning, protect the First Amendment rights, but also give parents their inherent right to the upbringing of their children? That's why my proposal was to take all challenged books and just require parental permission. I thought we had a good discussion on the work session. I didn't know this was getting tabled till a minute before the meeting, so out of principle of bad governance, I will be voting no, but I do look forward, no to table, and I do look forward to discussion in December.
Okay, that's it.
On that, can I move to vote to table the items seven B and seven C?
No, I'm gonna do it.
Perfect.
A motion to vote, to, a motion to table item... Hold on. Seven B and seven C to December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. So, so moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
What? Nay? Okay. Okay, we talked about the consent agenda. The consent agenda, the purpose of the consent agenda is to put into very routine, put in things that would take an inordinate amount of time to discuss, and I, again, encourage people to read it. As, as, all the personnel decisions are included in that, as well as some just routine contract work and other things. And that's where, where you can, you know, where you can, where you can see what, again, the budget. For example, the budget calendar is being approved, that Jonathan was talking about his finance approval. Okay? All right, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Let me just read this.
One second.
There we go. Yeah, I got it. Helen, in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving along. All right, so now we are up to residents' comments. Has anybody...
Marie Trinkle.
Marie?
Thank you. Thank you. It was really nice to see everyone today. My daughter actually participated when she was in high school in a science research project, so I know it's really important, and it was really nice to see the young adults participating. So my comments were on, I guess, two things. One is on the book, and another is on sort of the budget. But this is the book, The Hate You Give, and, I mean, I read it cover to cover. And my main feeling about the book, and everybody's talking about who it has access to and things like that, but my concept is it's basically a social activism book, and I'm not sure why it's in the, in the school public library. It basically, if you, when you go through it in the back, she summarizes things like it's a story of how racism is everywhere, how rules are disproportionately impact non-white racial groups, how skin color, hair texture impact people, how cops are racist. I mean, this is a school library. This is not a public library, and I think there's a place for everything. I think we should be concentrating, and one of the other issues is that the books apparently aren't even actively read. They're read by forty-six out of nine thousand four forty-nine students. And meanwhile, you know, it's purchased by librarian. I don't know their political, you know, feelings or anything, but it creates waves in the community because the parents are upset. It causes challenges. It has to be reviewed by the committee. Then it has to be reviewed by the superintendent. Then it has to be reviewed by the school board. It takes a lot of wasted effort in, for this book. And I mean, we should be talking about educating our students. I mean, I looked at those results. The basic, you know, reading, writing, mathematics, history, that's what we should be teaching our kids. We shouldn't have books in here that are teaching them, you know, that they're white, they're, you know, they're racist. And that's what these, these books do. So that's my, my concern. I mean, I know everybody's talking about procedures and policies, but, you know, public libraries are the place for this. School libraries are not the place for this. And that's my, my comments on that. The other point I just wanted to make, I know that we're talking about budgets at this time, and I think it's important at this time, when we look about budgets, I mean, you see what's going on in the economy. Companies are cutting everywhere. I know President Delulo said, oh, yeah, the costs are going up. Everything's gotta go up. And I know there were contract increases and things like that, but there is always waste. There is always some way to try to find money. I mean, I don't know, now we're gonna spend down the food money. I don't know what that means, that we have an extra a couple of hundred thousand dollars in the excess food budget? I don't know what that means, that we have to spend, spend down that money? We have to spend it for food? I mean, I don't quite understand. Okay. I'm sorry. So...
The interim superintendent is great for that.
Okay, but I mean, I think that, I've worked in business for years. I know there's always stuff. There's always stuff. I know when we didn't pass, the budget didn't pass. Miraculously, we came up with a couple of hundred thousand dollars, which I think probably could have been taken out of the original budget, but it wasn't. So I want, I want the board, they represent the community. I want them to go to the departments. I want to say, sharpen your pencil. Look at everything. You need to try to save money. And, and, you know, because the community is hurting, and I think it's important to say, oh, yeah, I'm just gonna get another increase. I don't think it's right. I'm sorry. I just want, you know, instead of talking about it after the budget's here, let's talk about it at the beginning, when you can really make a difference. So, that's it.
Thank you, Marie. Anybody else?
Candice Daglon. Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. In a shocking, disappointing, and even a bit comical in its ridiculousness, they were discussing book banning in the year twenty twenty-two. Sorry, I'm a horrible public speaker. I thought we would be applying cards by now, trying to dismantle, instead of trying to dismantle the progress that we have made. This seems a sentiment from a bygone era. Books, wonderful or horrible, convey experiences, thoughts, and the perspective of their character. The books in question are not textbooks or part of any curriculum. They are just books. And I imagine are sitting very lonely and undisturbed on the shelf in the library. Unfortunately, technology has seen to that. Books may cover many topics because life has a vast number of different experiences, and the experiences of others are different from your own. This is why not banning books is so important. Books are meant to share perspectives whether we agree with them or not. When we discuss banning, it is a slippery slope that, once started, can easily spin out of control as people have a multitude of different opinions about different topics. I believe that everyone is entitled to be heard, but a good conversation does not start with hysteria. I understand that parents are upset. But wouldn't it be better to have discussions instead of creating a false narrative and painting community members that disagree with you as perverts, groomers, and pedophiles? The next group of books being targeted for bans are books by people of color. It is baffling to me that you would try to marginalize and downplay these experiences through book banning. Unfortunately, the American experience for people of color can be very different from your own, and one way to try to understand that experience is through books. This world is made up of a different people, of different people, from cultures and backgrounds that have unique histories and stories. Blocking out those voices shows a tremendous lack of respect for what other people have endured and has no place in our school. Our library should be a reflection of diversity, not just of background, but of thought, and we should not attempt to homogenize them. It is my understanding that the majority of the individuals seeking these bans belong to a group called Liberty Moms. Liberty's Moms is not an organic movement. It was started in Florida, not New York, and it is well-funded by conservatives. Their narrative, whether they realize it or not, is pulling straight from homophobic and racist campaigns of the civil rights era and beyond, taking this group of well-meaning moms and putting them in alignment with more nefarious hate groups. Liberty means the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political review. The name seems ironic, given the current request. Those that want to shield their children from the outside world are free to do so, but not in a public school setting. Private schools and home schools may be options for people that don't believe public school is right for them. The answer is not to ban voices different from your own. Our children and our community have been through enough in past years. We don't need to go through a contrived witch hunt founded in prejudice and manufactured fear of the other. I hope we can start solution-oriented community conversations instead of letting our school become fodder for the extremist cause de jour. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving this opportunity to speak. I wanted to discuss the books. I prepared a statement, so. Whenever one enters a healthy debate, one must know and understand the motivation and the goals of the individuals they are debating. As is fashionable again, the goal of some in its community is a restriction of access to literature. Their motivation, so they believe, is to prevent students from reading literature, which these community members deem offensive or inappropriate. As a parent, I understand the need to protect a child from harm and danger, so I will not ascribe any nefarious intent to these, to those advancing this agenda in this community. But as a student of history, I know all too well that their motivation is misguided and based on a racist and tolerant homophobic playbook that predates many in this room. Now, over the last ten years, there has been a lot of progress in publishing of more diverse books and content by authors who represent a diversity of thought. A lot of this literature reflects the experience, experiences of people of color and the LGBTQ community. What I do find curious is the direct causation of the increase in diverse literature and the call for book banning. Of the books being banned nationally, forty percent of them have a protagonist or prominent secondary character of color. Forty-one percent have an LGBTQ plus theme, and twenty-one percent address race and racism. Let's be clear, this is not about protecting students or children. It's about fear, fear of the other. This movement of misguided, motivated community members wishing to ban books is not organic. It is yet another well-funded approach to try to prevent the impending demographic change in this great nation. I say to everyone in this room, change is not a bad thing, and we should not be afraid of it, especially when it leads to an inclusive society that values all and not just a few. To this end, books for young people should serve as both mirrors and windows to reflect and represent children and people in our society and world. This helps young people to see themselves and feel valued, the mirror, and provides opportunity to learn about the experiences of people who are different than they are the window. So I implore you, do not stop students from learning and understanding themselves, and more importantly, understanding the other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My apologies, I inadvertently have to read this from my phone. I also need to wear glasses all those years of reading dangerous books. So no education happens without exposure to new ideas, nor can it happen without discovery. And regarding the books that were on the agenda that we've decided to table, nobody's trying to change or indoctrinate by putting a book in a school library. These are not books that teachers are forcing down throats and saying, you read this right now. They're on a shelf for forty-six kids to check out. Those forty-six kids should have the right to check that out. Libraries give students access to works of all kinds in an educational environment. There's not enough time to cover everything in a classroom, so one function of a school library exists for that purpose, to extend the learning beyond a classroom in a school building. It's a place that gives students such an opportunity for discovery and discourse in the literary realm, just like a science research program might give students a chance for discovery in the science realm. Removing books from the library because you don't like what they say not only violates the Supreme Court ruling PICO versus Island Trees Board of Education, it removes the opportunity for civil conversations in a school building. There's no point in trying to reason with the book banners, some of whom may be on the school board. But it seems to me the solution is simple. If you don't want your kids to read the book, then you tell your kids not to read the book. And if your kid doesn't want to listen to you, that's on you. You're the parent. It's really easy. Say something like, hey, Timmy, you can't read The Hate U Give because I don't think it's appropriate. Problem solved. Be a parent to your own child, but when you ban the book, you remove the opportunity for people who might actually want to have a civil conversation about it with their kids. Book banners do not get to decide how others get to parent. If they don't want their kids to read because they might read about some very scary ideas, then their kids can stay out of the library. In eighteen-twenty-two, Jewish poet Heinrich Heim wrote, and this was in a book, so be careful, it might hurt somebody. Where they burn books, they will in the end burn human beings. What do you suppose happened to his book in nineteen-thirty-three? And I don't think this comparison is that far off, because when you remove the opportunity for civil discourse, there's not much decency left. And I can tell you that because some people were speaking before me, I heard the snickering, I heard the scoffing, I heard the commentary. So those of you who want to have a civil discussion about this, I'm free. But if you're gonna scoff, and you're gonna turn your nose up at it, and you're gonna say, no, take it out, I don't want my kid to see it, don't talk to me. There's no talking to you. Thank you.
Melanie?
To all in attendance this evening, I want to thank you in advance for your time, and I will be brief. My subject is the reading books that has already made its way so graciously or will be, will be in the very near future. Since it was stated that students are utilizing the library, well, let's change that. Maybe teachers can start using these books as mentor texts. I truly think we should have the best of both worlds. I think we should unite in the form of art and literature and have a combined hands on demonstration, bringing out the content of these books. How, you might ask? Well, through interactive play with both the drama and the literature, the literature teams. This will be a great way to really bring out the content and the characters to life, just as it would play out in the real world. So let's come together, and then let's make this, these graphically clever, and I do say clearly, clever pieces shine. Let's give attention to them as they call for. How, you might ask? We can actually turn this into a play. We can take a book, okay, like The Mist and Fury. We could have the kids put, come together in like maybe a book club. I can volunteer to run it and work with the drama teacher, and we can make this come
Motion to recess.
But this is in the library, so why can't I read it? The kids are reading it, and I say, let's put it in a play.
So move. Motion to come out of recess.
So move.
Second. All in favor? I thank all the speakers to come up. It's not easy to come up at the podium and talk about these issues, so I thank you. There are rules about what you can say and not say, and you cannot be provocative, and you cannot be salacious. I understand the point Melissa's trying to make, that you, we are in a business meeting, and it's going out to the public. Okay? And we try to give everybody the opportunity to speak, and we don't want people to take advantage of that. So I really do appreciate it, and we welcome anybody to come out and talk. You have opportunities to talk with Stona. God bless her that she does that in the morning and in the, right before this meeting. If you want to, I, I know most of the folks who are, who are, you know, activists in this, who have spoken, and Melissa, I know you, so I don't want to make it appear that we're trying to shut anything off because we're not, right? We tabled it, and we're gonna talk about it more. All right? We take this job really seriously, more seriously than you can attend. All right, so before I close, I'm gonna take a, a, an indulgence, a personal indulgence of being the president, okay? Besides, besides the honor. All right. Final thoughts? Boy, before I do that, Jonathan, I'm gonna give you fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds. Toys for Tots, you saw it coming in. The school is always great supporters. Holiday season is here, think about those a little bit less fortunate. Thank you so much for all your donations. Back to you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Final thoughts, as we celebrate Thanksgiving with our family and friends, let us reflect on all the people and things we are thankful for. I'm thankful to be able to work with my fellow trustees, our new superintendent, and the community, if I agree or I don't disagree. I think the fact that you show up and you talk and you want to be participating, I think that's terrific. I'm also mindful at this moment of reflection that there are many more things that unite us than divide us, namely, those kids that talked at the beginning of the meeting, and our kids, my kid, my son, who's at the middle school, and your kids who are in the school, or your grandkids, or your nieces and nephews. We're bound, we're bound, it's bound by them, the students of this district, and that is what we should always, always be focused on as we work together. Okay, with that, before we close the meeting out, on behalf of the Board of Ed, I wish you a happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December. Motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, and we'll see you in December.